All right, welcome to today's HR Business Services Committee meeting on March 7th, 2022, and we're getting started at approximately 5:06. So, we will start out, we have no guest presentations for this meeting, so we'll move on to number two, which is Department Reports, and we'll start out with Human Resources, and we will look at the monthly department summary report. Director Summers, thank you.
So, as typical report, you'll see the staffing updates in the first section. Quick updates through our benefits. We have been working on loan forgiveness through National Insurance and Horace Mann for offering for our employees, which is also part of the federal program. It's just helping them get aligned with what they need to do. We held our first retirement session in February. We'll be holding another informational session in March 10th. We have capped it at 20 employees per session, and both sessions are full. So, the first one is full, and the second one is also full. We're working on filling our parapositions, and we're working on reaching out to our temporary substitute teachers, as well as our assigned teachers to help facilitate coverage in other schools. The current openings listed as of last Friday there. And for contract negotiations, we do have two contracts for sure that will be brought forward to the board meeting. I just was informed this afternoon that the paraprofessional unit is not, their vote is not final until the 18th of March, so that will be coming forward in April and not on March 4th.
So, this resolution, Resolution HR-3-223874?
Correct.
So, I have this now, but this is going to come forward in the April.
Yes, their vote will not final.
Okay. So, after this meeting, Jackie and Brett will work on editing this, so those will come off. But they're placed here as a placeholder. Right now, we have that information. When the final agenda comes up, they'll. Okay, so then when it comes to the school board meeting and the HR, this report, we don't have to make special note about pulling that contract?
Okay, great.
Perfect. Great. Are there any questions? Great, the student loan forgiveness and debt management, that sounds great. And is that going to help a little bit as offering is a recruiting tool as well?
You know, I think it can be. I, for the district in general, I think most people think it's only for teachers, but it's actually for anyone in public service. So, getting that information out there, that it is applied for, it doesn't have to be a teacher, that it could be definitely used for that.
Great, and then I had another quick question on, I know we had talked about it earlier. Have we looked at waiving some of the fees for when we have applications for some of our jobs? I can't remember if we've talked about that already, or if not.
Yeah, for the paratest, we have been waiving the fee for anyone that's been serving as a substitute in our facility, and if they want to take the parat to become a regular employee of the paratest. And we've had two good people, I think, taking advantage of that.
All right, great. Thank you. I appreciate it. So, that's everything from HR?
It is.
Great. All right, so now we'll move on to 2B, which is Business Services, and we'll start out with the Finance Department Report.
Yeah, I just wanted to give an opportunity for Simone to share a little bit more on an update on our student activity progress. This has been quite the journey. If you remember, the Department of Education required us to switch our old site-based manual systems of recording student activity accounts, that it had to come into our district system. We were given a one-year waiver because we were switching systems. We were technically supposed to be doing this almost two years ago now. And Simone and her team have been working tirelessly for the past, gosh, almost nine months, identifying what we had to do, working with our buildings. We had to close multiple bank accounts, and all of it is running through our district accounts. So, I'm just going to press pause so that Simone can share a little bit with this group and for those that are watching on the progress that we've made and that we're almost at the finish line of this.
I'm very excited about this. It's been a good, long project. All the budgets have been loaded into Skyward, the revenue and expense budgets, so I'm very happy about that. And, you know, honestly, all the sites have been doing a great job. It's been a bit of a transition, learning new codes and new methods. We are down to, we're closing one more bank, and that, I hope to be getting that done this week. So, I'm very thrilled that we can finally say this project is finished. So.
I, I think too, you know, it has created processes that maybe weren't as efficient as they were in the past. We had a lot of cash that exchanged hands. We had local bank accounts, and people were able to kind of do, do things without the normal protocols that a school district would be required to show and prove through our audits. And so, I know that's been a little bit of a frustration for some, but as you probably can understand, that student activities and local activity accounts are one of the highest-ranked areas of fraud in school districts, just because there's so many people that can touch all those dollars. And that's part of the reason why we're seeing this happening. This was an MDE mandate. We didn't choose to do this. This was something that was required of us to pull this information into our district system and make sure that we were showing that accountability and process. And we continue to work and get great feedback from our sites on ways that we can create some efficiencies. You know, working through our district accounts payable system versus having a check that you can just hurry up and write is a little bit of an inconvenience right now, but we hope to create a good system so people can understand. And right before the meeting, Simone and I were talking about, you know, we have a lot of spring field trips now and things that are coming up where people are going places where before they could just carry around their checkbook and write a check. They're not able to do that anymore. So, it's just getting into that process of learning and understanding that in advance of an event or a field trip, they just need to check in with the accounts payable team, and they can get a check pre-written in advance. And we can still, you know, we can still get those things done, but it's just a little bit of a new systems approach. And all of that is just to make sure that we can show accountability to the department, to our taxpayers, through our systems, and to U.S. school board members. So, but it has been, it has been a labor of love for the finance team. And I do want to say that it's been so great. Simone and her team are visiting every school site, meeting directly, so it's not just Google meets or, or here's an email and explaining it. They've been really engaged in being able to meet with them and ask questions and get some really positive feedback. So, and we've been getting positive feedback from the sites saying that this was really nice, that we did that. So, I think that's pretty good. Besides the work on the student activity accounts, as you know, we're, we're embarking into budget time. This is, we wanted to share with you just a quick, brief update on our budget timeline that's coming up. At our April 26th school board meeting will be the first time we will be providing that first draft budget to the board as a draft. Each year then, we will have a minimum of two special committees of the whole in May to go over revised budgets. And then June, we may have an additional committee of the whole before we bring the adopted school board budget for the fiscal '23 school year at our regular school board meeting. Last year, we had a special meeting right at the very end of June only because we had some issues and concerns related to the ESAR funds and what the budget was going to look like. So, we had to kind of wait to hear what the legislature was going to do, but we feel more confident right now that we should be able to have it ready to go by the last regular school board meeting in June. We were, are going to be starting our work meeting with our department leads and our building leaders next week. We'll be providing some base data information on where we are this year, how we can afford things for next year. We're also working on our ESAR funding and those things that were a part of the June 2021 board adopted budget and how some of those will be rolling forward, and then recommendations for some adjustments into the fiscal '23 school year. So, we continue to work on that process. And then, again, we'll be bringing forward more information to all of our leads and our departments as we move forward. So, we look forward to that.
Kathy, that's June 19th is where we get, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And my hope is that we won't have any hiccups, but with the legislature, again, we have not had a legislature close on any reasonable amount of time in the last three or four years. So, if the legislature hasn't adjourned, we may press pause to see where we're going to be in terms of where we think we're going to be for the budget. So, but our intention right now is to have an adopted budget to recommend on June 19th.
Okay. And then I just, are there questions? Simone, did you, when you went out to the buildings, was that an opportunity to do some more education and then collect some feedback, or?
Very much so. I loved it. Yeah, and I got good feedback from the clericals and the principals as well, because they, they're like, how do I look this up? I mean, I taught a lot of them how to look up a budget, and they're like, you know, it's all by a filter. So, they appreciated that. And I answered other questions, brought those questions back to my desk, and I've been going through some questions they had and correcting some things or adjusting some things. So, I thought it was a terrific experience. And we're not done yet. We still have two sites left, but.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, it's been well-received, and I hope, I, you know, I'd love to get out again before year end. I'll try. But for sure, I'm going to, I'd like to do this at least once a year. I can, I'll try and do it again.
That's great. I think that's really important, that there's opportunities for the buildings to provide some feedback and then additional opportunities for education.
They seem to really like it.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Great. So, now we can move on to the enrollment report.
There were enrollment reports that were included in Board Book, and I'm looking at the March Enrollment Students and Projected Average Daily Membership provided by Cattery Little. And I just wanted to make a quick note that we did, based on our last month's HR Business Services meeting and approved by the school board, we did adjust our budgeted pupil counts for this school year. It went from 8180 to 8,005, so you can see that on the budgeted ADM column. And with that, and looking at the new projections for the year, that gets us within one, based on where we are projecting right now. So, that was based on some great teamwork and guessing and projections. We know that that number may continue to decline just slightly. We know that this is the time of year that we see some unenrollments from early graduations or changes in the secretaries. That's a common practice in the district in the spring. But we feel really good about, that we're getting, that we feel that we're closer to what we see as the projected ADM.
CFO Erickson, could you tell me that first number we adjusted from what?
8180. So, we had budgeted 8,180 students for the 2022 budget, and now we're revising that to 8,005.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. I'm just guessing that we have at least some students that are going to be short credits because of the pandemic. And so, how will that, how does that get reflected in your enrollment stats?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, for students who will be participating in our Alternative Learning Center, which can generate additional .2 ADM over and above their 1.0, we can generate extra dollars through that, which comes in the form of ADM. We also have access to ARP funds, which can help support getting those credits for students. So, it could be that students could be generating revenue or generating credits, but we may not actually put them on our enrollment system if we're going to use another source of funding to help support that. So, we'll be working with multiple groups. Cattery Little and I, and Assistant Superintendent Bonds have, you know, there's, there's targeted services, which is that summer extended time. But then with all these ARP funds, we could be using that so that students can still gain enrollment without having to put them on our enrollment. Many students right now, if you know, they could be generating credits, and once we hit that point too, we're not getting any revenue anyway. And we've been doing our very best the past several years to make sure every student who's eligible for credits gets credits regardless of that cap. So, a lot of students are earning credits, and the district's really getting no revenue for that. But if we can maximize these ARP/ESAR funds this summer, which we have access to different pots of money this year, we would be able to support that, to get those with the district without actually losing money, because we'd support that staff cost with ESAR and ARP funds. Does that make sense? Okay.
And I just want to clarify, but ARP is American Rescue Plan?
Yep.
And not AARP?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. We use tho, we use ARP and ESAR interchangeably. When we first got the money, ESAR 3, we went ESAR 1, 2, and 3. But that's also, if you see on other things from, say, the School Board Association or others, they might use ARP, but those are all the same to us. They're all ESAR.
So, that concludes our enrollment?
Yep, correct.
And we've answered a question. So, now we move on to 2B, 3B, which is our Child Nutrition Department Report.
Any questions on anyone that had a chance to look at? Again, we just appreciate the work that's being done with our Child Nutrition team. We have hired a few employees, so we're excited about that. But we still have many openings in all of our buildings and related to food service helpers. You can see the meals. And again, we continue to have those supply chain challenges here as, as many districts throughout the state and country are having right now, so.
CFO Erickson, I noticed, well, and I don't, I might, I'm just going to stop. Are we experiencing more cost in nutrition because of inflation for prices of food? So, are we making adjustments to budgets? And how are we covering those additional costs if we have?
Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't experienced that. We do a bid every year for our food service, so we get a beginning-of-the-year bid process on that. What will oftentimes happen is food won't become available, so we have to get substitute product when those items aren't available. We haven't dug deep yet because of inflation. We do have a fund balance in child nutrition that can help us support if there's an unexpected cost for this year, but that will be part of our evaluation going into fiscal year '23, is that if we are going to see a sustained increase in cost or a sustained increase in supply chain issues, we'll probably have to do some adjustments there. And again, we are hopeful that maybe the state and/or the federal government will provide additional funding supports, knowing that as well, especially if we continue to see the continued full funding of those Type A lunches for all students that qualify. That becomes kind of a challenge for us because we don't have that same level of opportunity to raise funds.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a question on the document itself. The dates on here are February 1st and February 7th and 2nd, so it says the number of meals served in January?
You know what? I'll have to just check with her. I think she uses a save report and probably just forgot to update that. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
You shouldn't be an editor. Like, you have an eye for those details. I'm always very impressed with that. That's important.
I'm available for hire.
Yeah.
And so, that concludes our Child Nutrition Department Report. So, we're going to move on to Facilities today.
Well, thank you. It has been actually a pretty good month. We didn't get a lot of snow, but it wasn't too bad. We did a lot of work in the buildings, a lot of cleaning effort. We've completed 143 work orders. Currently have 201 open work orders. Work is really ongoing in the facilities building on the hill. We've done a lot of work. Demo is complete. Renovations are ongoing, and the furniture just outs of the, they're really doing well. The, I drafted this a couple of weeks ago, so this, the third bullet point has changed a bit. We have worked with our district attorney, and we've submitted a proposal to Northland Constructors. I do not have a response back on lane one bonding issue, but we're expecting to hear shortly. And the construction tasks, the master plan on the hill, that's something that we'll be doing on our own now. That could be information today. Building operations, they've been doing an excellent job. All our site staff are just doing a great job of keeping the sites safe for staff and students. They're working hard. We're, we're doing a good job. We do have many vacancies, and they're working to fill those with resources and their help and coming up with a variety of ideas to entice people to work for us. Under health and safety, the Tier 2 reporting is completed, and that's related to the few storage tanks that we have left in the district. Matt had a second labor management safety committee meeting himself, and final repairs are made to our district leaders. They have to be certified every five years, and that has been completed. Then the last two bullet points talk about the E-team. We have a district-wide E-team, and each site has an E-team. But the district team is the team that will facilitate any needs of this building, that we should do. And then the work comp activities are self-explanatory, and I can open it up for questions if anybody might have any.
Are you okay if I add in about the news that happened? As board members were notified this afternoon, as was gone out in a press release this afternoon, Saturday Heights LLC, as part of the Saturday Properties Group, notified us on Friday that they would not be moving forward with the purchase agreement related to Central on the Hill. They will be providing direct contact with the media and others who have specific questions on their decision. The information that they shared with us was that this was, this was basically their, what they'll share with community members or media is that Saturday Properties informed Bommer Realty that they will no longer be able to see a path forward to redevelop the site of the Duluth Central High School. Rising construction costs, market conditions, and city expectations create too many barriers to ensure success of housing on the site. This in no way impacts our redevelopment of historic Old Central and will continue to pursue other opportunities in Duluth. So, just wanted folks to know that we did meet again this afternoon with their attorney and their lead. They shared with us how much they've appreciated working with us and that there was no one thing that caused this. So, I just want the board and folks that are listening that there was just a, a mix of, of things that happened that caused them to see that right at this time that it was going to be difficult to move forward with the project. Part of the reason, too, that we wanted to make sure that this information got out was that our property manager, Greg Bommer, will be working to put out information that we feel very confident that this site is something that a developer will see as a great opportunity, and we want to make that available as soon as possible. So, certainly you can open it up for any questions. We can answer more questions at the board meeting next Tuesday as well. But we knew that this was coming out, so we wanted to make sure board members had a sense of what happened.
How does this affect the master plan or the area by the city for us to proceed with our portion?
Yeah, thank you. That's such a great question. So, we worked with Nathan Norton, who is our, one of our project managers on the project from ICS. This in no way changes the process that we're moving forward with on our project on Central on the Hill, which is the last, kind of the back third of the property. We actually, even though there was a master planning document, our project and process has been independent of this process, so we have all of our permits and requirements through the city right now. So, we are able to just continue moving forward. And as a reminder for those folks that are listening, when we were requesting special legislation and talking through this process, we did not have a potential buyer. So, when we set up our process, we went into our project on Central on the Hill as if we would be going it alone. We were super excited to have someone partner early on with us when we knew that there was interest and we saw the opportunity to partner as we were moving along. But all along, we knew that in the event that, just due to the complexity of this purchase agreement and board members who were a part of several closed meetings, this was, this was a fairly complicated phased approach to purchasing a large number of acres on Central on the Hill. So, we continue to know that as of this time right now, we have enough funding to be able to complete our entire process. And at this time, we can also complete the demolition of Central. Any other questions?
While this is not the news we hoped for, right? We went into this knowing that this was a possibility, and we are in a better place now with that property than we were when this first happened. So, while I am disappointed, I have incredible respect and confidence in the team. As we move forward, we protected ourselves as we went into this process for this possibility. And we'll just move onward and upward. And as we've said, it doesn't affect what happened at Hawks. So, again, while it's not great, we'll just keep truckin'.
And for those that are listening, I know it can be complicated. Historic Central, or Hawks, as we like to call it, we met, as we were visiting with the Saturday team today. They are moving forward on that process. It sounds like construction will be starting within a month or two, and they're going to be starting to do the interior processes there. So, this doesn't have any effect on that project down there for them. They are invested in Duluth. They are excited about moving forward with that. But as was shared, this was a, a much larger, much more complicated process. And all along, we knew that there was, you know, potential hiccups along the way. But thank you for saying, our team is really amazing, and we have really smart people who fought through a lot of these different pieces. And so, I think we're as poised as we can be, and we continue to look forward to moving forward on our project.
Yeah, our project is going to move to completion. We protected ourselves through this entire process to make sure we were serving students and kids. We'll just move on and work with the next interested party.
Absolutely.
Great. Are there any other questions? Great, so let's see. I need to regroup after. So, we have concluded our Facility Department Report, and now we're going to move on to our Technology Department Report. Welcome, Bart.
Thank you. As you can see, the numbers for cyber security are very similar to last month. This was in the whole month of February. I reported it early to Jeffrey and friend. Under the 100 bid, it's been 1,300. That you'll be reviewing a little bit later in this meeting. I believe the price was, the bid was $861,000, so you have to do. Helped us tickets for that portion of the month. We had 480 new tickets, 304 tickets were resolved, 433 tickets were unresolved. First response collection to those end users was 15 hours, and that average resolution time for a classroom was 73 hours. Projects, that CDWG wireless validation site survey, it was on hold until, the good news we heard about the NAS in our school district. So, I'm looking at having that rescheduled for the end of the month to get their team in to review, visit every one of our classrooms and every one of our district sites to take a look at our existing wireless access points and AD interference that's happening in our buildings. Because Loom Terni Brothers, who's right now, are waiting to receive the AD cables, base plates for the smart boards before they can actually schedule the time to install them. So, we have pretty much all the parts except for all the AD handling and the base plates. Until they receive that, they can't install it.
Other questions?
Do you know how long it's going to take? Is it going to be once, or is it every decade?
I am hoping weeks, but I've been emailing them weekly. The last three weeks, they were up during break. I emailed them last week, and I haven't received a response. So, I'm thinking it's a supply chain, that they're just hoping that they just show up, and they said, aren't they there? So, it's, yeah.
And is the wireless validations, are they, will they do anything to improve cell phone service in some ways?
It will not. It's just for our wireless. I know there's some other things that we're looking at, actually. Some of the schools don't have it in their cell professional.
And I think they're working in this day and age with emergencies, right?
Bart, so for the wire validation survey, is that also, so that's looking to improve the wireless access at all the different?
Correct.
And, and if there's deficiencies found, then do we have capacity to be able to fix those deficiencies?
It would, we'd have to be looking at our budget.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. It's depending on what we find, if we have to keep this in mind as we think about budgeting. Okay.
So, we do have the capabilities in each of our classrooms. We do have a wireless access point, and I think we have a school cable to 15 feet. So, it might be just moving in from, you know, the center of the room to the hallway or to some. or to somewhere else in the room to help sell them. But some of them might be, oh, we need one in the hallway, or we need one down the hallway, so we may have to put additional cable and stuff to address those.
And then with this, and we're pretty good with capacity on our wireless, we can support what we're gonna?
We haven't seen any capacity issues.
Okay.
We've seen some issues or density issues, or they'll try to have too many people in an area, like in the media center. So we've run into some of those, but that's a question in the classroom.
All right, 'cause I suppose some of these conversations, as we invest more and more technology, we have to start, it's almost like long-term facilities planning. It really is like thinking about the differences, the life of someone is like this compared to when we build a building.
We have a great couple of spreadsheets out there right now, and our team's working on short-term, mid-range, and long-term cycles. And it's gonna be a really, really important question as we're phasing out of ESSER and phasing out of our processes to determine, you know, how does this fit in with our strategic planning and our yearly budgeting? I think we're, we're able to provide some great resources right now, but knowing that we have, have regular conversations about what that means past 2023 is gonna be really critically important.
Thank you. Bart, do we have any, any like stations or capability for people to hardware their computers? Should they have wireless problems or not?
We have our desktops pretty much roam the district, but we don't, you know, for the wireless. We have roam those for 3312.
I guess I'm talking more than for staff or?
For staff, we don't have that capability, just because it's a security risk. So we, we would never know what's on that device that they would bring in. So we have a security risk, biolab and stuff like that.
We've been talking about technology security all day on and off today.
We have, we have a budget for ransomware, right?
We have, we have an insurance policy. Not reassured at all, no, that's. And, and for all the hoops we had to go through to get that policy, you can tell that this is becoming a more and more important consideration for all municipalities, especially school districts that have so many people on their network.
And I think we should have a moment of silence for former member Tranca, 'cause she would be happy if we were having this conversation. Amen to that. So we're finished with the technology department report, thank you, Bart, and we'll move on to the transportation department report.
Yeah, so there's just some bullet points here from Steve Johnson and his team, just wanting to let folks know that one of the things that happened March 1st was the reinstatement of field trips and other activities. So that's gonna mean more opportunity for our transportation teams to coordinate and do those things. As has been shared, we are at the precipice of staffing. We continue to have enough staff to do the things we have to do, but we do not currently have excess staff. So we've been working with our buildings and our leaders and our department leaders to say that as long as we can, as long as we have the staff to do the work, we'll do the work. So we look forward to partnering with that, just wanting to, to share. And then when this report was written, we were still in the mask mandate, but we have notified bus drivers and our third-party vendor Voyager that we are using the protocol that was shared with staff and the public last Friday in relation to being under low transmission right now, that masks will not be required on, on school buses right now. So we're excited about that. And we continue to just have our same opportunities and challenges in just making sure that, you know, we can keep our buses running and keeping, getting our students to school. And then there's some, at the last bullet that Steve shares, we have some other issues for our drivers to make sure that we're going through some training processes and we're working through that.
Great. Are there any questions on the transportation report? All right, so now we move on to the consent agenda.
Can I press pause just?
Yes.
So Member Oswald had, had shared with us, after having some training with MSBA and her clerk's training regarding the utilization of a consent agenda for certain items that we currently have on the consent that probably need to be in a individual vote format when we get to the regular school board meeting. And with the transition of Jackie Dolan to Brett, we just didn't, we talked about it internally and we talked about how we could restructure this, this agenda to keep all the items on the agenda, but that they would just be separate line items and rather than having that consent heading there. So we'll continue to, we'll get that done, and I apologize for the hiccup there, but there will be things that will, based on the recommendations that we got from MSBA, they'll just shift out of this agenda into individual motions and consent. 'Cause there's, there are things on the consent agenda that may remain on the consent agenda. There's just things like resolutions that will need individual votes.
Okay.
Just to comment for the board and for anyone else, that, that information was, was just shared, you know, 15 minutes before the meeting, and so the structure of the agenda.
Oh, you mean the, the resolution?
The related, or the, the information related to consent agenda, so it was time to shift in.
We can shift it, that's okay. We got it, and thank you so much for the support and information. You know, I think for those of us that, you know, I looked back and we haven't had, we haven't had a consent agenda that hasn't been unanimous since we started consent agenda, so technically everything falls under, you know, making sure that there's majorities and super majorities and those type of things, but good process is good and we need to adjust from there, so we appreciate that.
So for this number three, when we move, when I, am I gonna have to make a change to the committee report then as I give it at the school board meeting? Can we have that conversation?
And I think we'll keep it in the same order, but what we'll do is we'll just put headings on whether it's consent or special.
Perfect.
So it, it will stay in the same order.
I, I just wanna talk about a little bit about what I learned is that the recommendation from MSBA is that no resolutions be on a consent agenda, because you always wanna at least give a summary of what a resolution is. And there are certain resolutions that do require special votes and, and special voting platforms, and you can't be reassured that that happened necessarily, and it's not as transparent to the public. And it's always good to at least tell people what we're voting on and why we're voting on it, that sort of thing. For the community to know, because right now, they just know that we, we vote on an agenda and, you know, they don't know necessarily what we're voting on.
Thank you, Member Oswald. That's very helpful, 'cause good process is important.
We, we do, and, and I think depending on how different things get reported, I think we have all the discussion here at the committee level, so that we've had the process and the feedback and the conversations about things that we bring forward that, you know, always the intent of a consent agenda is non-controversial items, that's the whole intent. And how we specifically have put in there that in the event that there's anything a board member wants to discuss or wants to have conversation about, that could be pulled off at any time. And we've had a few instances since we've started the consent process where items have been pulled, but again, we support the adjustment and change.
Yeah, thank you. So as we go through the consent agenda, we see we have the HR staffing report, and do we have anything, do we discuss this, or do we, we just know that it's attached?
Yeah, any, unless there's specific questions, usually we just, it's a, it's a performer.
Performer, okay.
Yep.
So then we will move on to, let me just think. And then we have the, under 3B, we have a financial report and a budget revision. And this budget revision, I'm assuming is a, I am assuming that is attached back to that revised ADM so that you can find how we've looked at our ADM and how we've reflected that in our budget revision for this year. Okay. Next, move on to, then we have our fundraisers, and we will put those, will still remain on the consent agenda. And we've had a fundraiser with Ordine East, and they raised monies to be used for flexible seating, wobble chairs, and balance balls, so that's great. So that's our fundraising. Now we move on to 3Cs, which is bids, RFP and quotes. And Bart, this is the bid I think you were referencing earlier in the technology section. And so this bid right here is from. This bid, and so this will be something that we will have to approve at the March school board meeting. And this bid is from CDW Government, and it is a bid for $852,850. So you were close, you said 860 more, right?
Yeah.
Pretty close. And so we will see this back on our consent agenda for the March school board meeting. All right, okay. And when we come down to contracts, change in orders, leases, we have none there. Come down to resolution, this is where we are looking at our resolution. So we'll pull these out of the consent agenda and vote on them separately at the March school board meeting.
We will put all the resolutions as special on this upcoming March meeting.
Okay, great, so we have two resolutions, one for the Education Minnesota Integration Specialist. So we have come to an agreement on that contract. Take a minute and say yes, good job, everybody. Can't wait for that teacher one to come through, right? And then the next one we have is resolution for the food service employees, that we have a settled contract with them as well. And then we will move the paraprofessionals. If that contract is approved, that will come to us in the April meeting. Great.
It's my understanding that the teachers contracted them, and then their vote next week will come in April as well.
Right.
I believe their vote is on the 17th.
Oh, great, okay.
I could just say how much work Teresa and her human resources team have done. I just, I'm, it's been great and just, our teams have been really grateful, the collaboration and coordination of working with our bargaining units and really listening to some ways in which we can make some good difference. I, I just, I've just been really grateful and I just, we're lucky to have Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa, we are very lucky to have you. It's been, when did you come on to the team?
November 1st.
Seems like yours.
Yeah.
It does.
I bet, seriously. That's great, okay, so we've gone through these contracts. And now we move on to some miscellaneous, oh, the acceptance of the donations, I'm sorry. And so we will, this will stay on the consent agenda?
No, this will be a special resolution.
This will be a, acceptance, okay.
Yep, this is an actual resolution.
Okay.
Don't know if anyone had any questions on, this is kind of a lull time of the year for donations. A lot of times we see them at the beginning of the school year, this one. And as I share in other meetings, these come from the sites, and so sometimes all the sites will take like a specific month and put a whole bunch of donations from the last couple of months. So you'll see some months have a whole ton of them and then others, but it's a smaller group of donations.
Great. Oh yeah, that makes sense, 'cause it's in the special. And then now we move on to miscellaneous informational items. We have the district property update, and we've had that update.
Yep, that was provided by Nathan Norton, it's in your packet, and it's just kind of just the upcoming and recent progress on, on the, the projects we have here in the district.
And then our expenditure contracts?
We did have just a few expenditure contracts this month. And again, as a reminder for those that are reading those, when you see that asterisk next to the amount, it's an up to amount, that doesn't mean that we're spending that entire amount. We do have an occasion where there might be needing an amendment if they need to go over that amount, and then that expenditure contract comes back to the board for additional review. So you might see that on a future meeting. We do try to provide enough information so you know what department or contact source and whether or not it's department restricted, whether it's restricted because of funding sources and then a general description.
And then no cost contracts?
We did not have a, did we have one no cost contract?
Yes. Northern Foundation.
Oh, yeah, this was just an extension of, of an MOU to just change the date. So it was just a, it's the same, it's an agreement we've already approved, but they asked for a date extension.
And then grant applications, we have one grant application.
We do.
Lincoln Park?
Yep, and even though this went to, this went to press, we already heard from Project Joy that they got the grant. So you'll see that on the April board meeting.
That's great.
So that will come next one.
So I believe there's no business after that, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so that concludes our March business and, hold on, what are we calling it? HR and Business Services today. Thank you, everybody, and again, my apologies for being late.